Okay, we want to welcome the candidates running for City Council District Number One. As we make our way down the table here, Brian Berry, Pixie Boyden, Tyrone Hampton, and Calvin Wells. As we've done with the past, you each will have some time to share something about yourself, why you're running for office, and why you're here today. You're going to start with two minutes to do that. And we have the timekeeper down here who will be waving these colorful cards should you go too long. We'll begin with you. I'm sorry, yes, you're right, that one.
First of all, I want to thank the Pasadena Latino Coalition for hosting this and this event, as well as the Senior Center. It's truly important for the community to get to know all the candidates. And this is the type of forum that helps allow for that to happen. Secondly, what I'd like to say is, the reason why I'm running, one of the reasons why I'm running, is because I feel like in local politics, you can make a difference. You can get to know your elected officials, you can have relationships with them, and you can inform their ideas and attitudes. Another reason why I'm running is because I want to create a movement. I want something that transcends the campaign, that is not just solely for elective purposes, but is also something that will continue on into the future. Another reason why I'm running, I've been noticing that there are a lot of people who are disenfranchised, a lot of people who are disengaged, a lot of people who don't feel like their vote counts. Again, in a local election, if you look historically, it's just a few votes, one way or the other can make all the difference in the world. So, I'm running a campaign that is attempting to galvanize people, inspire them, inform them, educate them, so that they will participate in local elected politics. So, it's a great opportunity, it's been a fascinating experience, and I'm very, very grateful to be able to be a representative for City Council District One.
Thank you all, thank you all very much for hosting this event today. I am actually, as you may well know, as you can see, my name is Pixie Boyden. I am a longtime resident here in Pasadena. I have two young children, well, I won't say they're young, they're mid twenties at this point, and to me, still young. And I say young because as I look around, things that need to be changed and enhanced for their quality of life moving forward, I'm concerned. I'm concerned about what's going to be their legacy as we move forward. And instead of being concerned, I decided to run for office to help shape and shift what their voice, how their voice can be heard over time in public policy, in politics, at City Hall. I'm very committed to being more engaged than I've ever been before in city government. I've been active in Pasadena since 2002, and specifically in Northwest since 2003 in this district. And so, for me, it really is about making sure that we're creating the correct and necessary environment to reengage populations that do not feel like they have a voice, that do not feel like they're being heard or listened to, and don't have the kind of resources currently set for them today, for them to be set in place for them and for their kids moving forward into the future. And so, this is why I'm running for office.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to first thank the Pasadena Latino Coalition for having this great event on my birthday. So, I thank everybody for being out here celebrating my birthday with me as well. It really is my birthday. But, actually, I'm running for a few reasons, there's quite a few. I am a school board member here now in the city of Pasadena. When I was first elected to the school district, there were a few people that said, "Tyrone, the things that you want to accomplish would take ten years, it's a process." I think that that's the problem with politics, is that everything has become a process. In two years' time, I've accomplished everything that was on that list, that my community came to me and asked me to work on. Also, I'm running because, like I said, it is a process. And in Northwest Pasadena, I've lived there all my life, and for decades, it has looked exactly the same. I think it's time that we need some new energy, some new, some new blood that will help change things within the city of Pasadena. And I ask for your vote today. I see, I know my, I know my family's voting for me for sure, so I got that row covered. So, I just want to say, thank you so much for having this.
Good afternoon, thank you for being here with us today. I want to give thanks to Pasadena Latino Coalition for hosting this event. It's important to be heard as a candidate. My lifetime has been spent in public service. I feel grateful for the fact that I've been able to serve this community, going through the ranks of the Pasadena Fire Department, actually growing through the ranks of Pasadena Fire Department as a public servant for more than three and a half decades. The last three years, as Fire Chief of Pasadena Fire Department. One of my major accomplishments in my career as Pasadena Fire, with Pasadena Fire Department, was the fact that I was able to diversify Pasadena Fire Department to be one of the most diverse fire departments, if not in the region, throughout the state of California. Over the last ten years, I was directly responsible for every hiring and promotion decision, both as Fire Chief and along with my predecessor, Chief Downs. I'm running for City Council to continue my service to this great community, this community that I love and my family loves. You can't be a person to complain in this life if you're not willing to step forward and engage. And I'm ready and willing to engage. The last thirty-five years have prepared me for the next four, as your representative in District One. I'm concerned with continuance of good public safety, I'm very concerned with fiscal responsibility, and I want to assure you that I will provide for quality services to all members of our neighborhoods. So, I am focused on quality of life issues to make a great city even greater. Thank you.
All right, we're going to have a set of nine questions. You each have sixty seconds to answer them. We can start with Mr. Wells there. The first question is, what do you see as some of the biggest challenges facing the residents of District One?
The, one of the major challenges is accessibility to housing, that is a major issue, affordable housing, and to the relevant labor market, jobs. Those are two major issues for the residents of District One. We, as a neighborhood, also have struggled to receive quality services throughout our community, as far as equity of service. And I want to make sure that I'm a catalyst to make sure that that happens for our residents.
Could you please repeat the question?
The question is, what are some of the biggest challenges facing the residents of District One?
I think one of the biggest challenges that faces the residents of District One is the lack of opportunity for youth. Here recently, there's been a lot of crime in our community, and I believe that it is due to the lack of opportunity for youth. I think that if you think of everything as a child being, I just had, just recently had a child myself, as the focus or the center of everything in your community, everything else kind of flows itself out. For example, for my child, I have to have a good job, I have to have a quality job. In Northwest Pasadena, there's not quality jobs, there's no incentives for small businesses or businesses to open in Northwest Pasadena, which should be. And I believe that our major problem is the lack of opportunity for youth.
I think some of the biggest challenges for District One as a whole do center around some of the common themes represented so far. Having adequate employment and vocational education that's relevant to the current market and future perspectives is something that we really need to be focused on, and making sure that our community members are engaged in that process and have access to these kinds of resources. Now, that by itself is not going to cure everything, however, it does start having some long-lasting, sustainable effects on ensuring that people are educated and well-prepared to hit the market so that they can sustain for their families. In addition to that, ensuring that there is, on the flip side of that, making sure that there are employment opportunities that are paying adequate amount of resources for individuals who are taking those jobs, so that they can actually provide for their families long-term. While there are plenty of things that need to be fixed in District One, there are just as equal many things that are going really great in District One currently.
The overarching challenge for District One, for many of the residents in District One, is poverty. Two, three families living in one unit, lower-quality housing, challenges with everything from, from crime to education. It was talked about earlier, access to health care. So, for a lot of people, it's a forgotten part of the city. It's incredible to walk the streets in District One, especially up around Washington School, up in Ariska Park, your high school, and to see the vast concentration of life there. You have a front house, you have a middle house, you have a back house. You have multi-generational families, you have families with kids, with multiple kids. So, all of these are enormous challenges. I do agree that we have a lot of the solutions, but I would also say that we need to work together to find solutions for these issues.
And you'll start us off with the next question here, Mr. Berry. What are some concerns, this is a three-part, if anybody wants to take some notes on this one. What are some concerns expressed by Latino constituents in your district? How did you learn about them? What would you be able to do as an elected official that you can't do as a community member to address those issues?
So, the first one is access. It's understanding what's going on. I found out about that issue and other issues because I talk to people and because I'm in the neighborhoods, because for over ten years, I worked for a city office called Neighborhood Connections, and I was in the neighborhoods every day. Currently, I still work in Northwest Pasadena, and I'm working on a wide variety of the topics that were discussed earlier. The next one is employment. And so, with the challenge with employment is legal status. So, oftentimes, people say, "I want a job, I want to work, I want to contribute to the community, but I can't get a job because I don't have status." Another significant issue for the Latino community is education. There are many, many families that have a difficult time because of language, because of knowledge of the system, they're not able to adequately advocate for their children. So, those are three issues that I would say are very important.
Some of the concerns I've heard from the community have centered around being connected in their community, specifically to other segments of their community. And a lot of that has to stem with what is perceptually, and anodally contributing to the quality of life of individuals. So, a lot of, I've heard from a lot of individuals that, you know, they have particular issues in particular segments around what perceives to be community violence, or what they hear is community violence occurring in their neighborhoods. In addition to that, education opportunities, and also having employment opportunities for themselves as well. And I hear about this because I'm in the community, I'm engaged in the community, I do a lot of work with a lot of different organizations as well in this community. So, I do hear about this on a regular basis. What to do to fix them means we have to really start taking a look at how to collaborate with entities who are doing some of the really great work that is necessary and needed, and how to foster this and replicate this more consistently.
I think some of the concerns of the Latino community that I've personally spoke with parents is family. I mean, something about the Latino community, which is really strong, as well as the Black community, we're a really family-oriented group of people. And so, we think of our family as a whole. Where is my next, where, I guess, what should I say, is, how do I afford to stay in the city of Pasadena? How do my children have a quality, quality life in this city when I'm working three or four jobs? So, talking to parents, a lot of it has to do with their family, their concerns have always been their family, and do they have a quality of life? How would we change that? Is we make incentives for businesses to move into Northwest Pasadena, which I do believe would help with hiring locals. As a business owner in town, I hire locals regularly, only because I, well, number one, because I love my community, number two, because I know they're going to be on time. So, it's incentivizing businesses, and my time is up.
Thank you, this is a great question. I run a youth baseball program, of which probably eighty-five and ninety percent of the families are Latino. So, a lot of my information comes directly from families that I interact with on an ongoing basis. I also learn of issues concerning jobs, concerns about jobs, housing, and their safety, through people that I know that are close to me, close to my campaign, such as Pofilio Frosta, who is here today, and Seraphine Espinoza, people who are out there in the trenches day in and day out. And I believe the key is to continue to collaborate with some of the assets we have available, such as El Centro, and then the many programs that they have available, and make sure we continue to target comprehensive programs and services that will ultimately help make a difference for people, and help them, help themselves to a better way of life.
Mr. Hampton, we'll let you start this one. Tomorrow night will be the annual joint meeting of the Pasadena City Council and the Pasadena Unified School Board. An update on Collaborate Pasadena will be given, and there's going to be a discussion on the draft Youth Master Plan. Do you plan to attend, why or why not?
I plan to attend because I'm a school board member, so I will be there. But my opinion on Collaborate Pasadena, and most people probably know this, I appreciate and applaud the city for moving some steps towards trying to help with education, but it's not, it's not enough, not compared to what other school districts are getting in their cities. I think of some of the greatest school districts around us, that's around us. And there is major buy-in from their city. It is time that our city believes in education, and not just development of Colorado Boulevard, but the most valuable asset of the city is the people.
Thank you. Yes, I actually am planning to attend, and that's primarily because after reading and listening to a lot of the other conversations and being to other meetings where this collaboration has been discussed, we really have to get a good sense of, of some of the plans that are being made moving forward, in terms of how the city is really wanting to put measurable steps towards the collaboration between PUSD and the city government as well. Because right now, it really does feel as if there is a collaboration. However, you know, we have to have some tangible outcomes that really do impact positive change, and it has to be a shared vision. So, I really would like to hear how they're collaborating, and how that entity is really working together, to get a better sense of what kind of collaboration tools are going to be necessary, should I become elected into office? And how can I possibly help those entities really step into a place of finding this shared vision and common goals, so that we can actually move forward with some tangibles?
Yes, I will be attending. I'll actually be making a present, or be a part of the presentation on the Youth Master Plan. For the past over a year, I've worked with a variety of organizations, including Day One, Youth Ambassadors, Lake Avenue Church, to help craft a plan that will help guide the city with relation to youth. Many, many cities around the country have Youth Master Plans. We have a plan for just about everything here in Pasadena, but we do not have a Youth Master Plan. So, I will be assisting with that conversation. The second reason is because for more than the past year, I've helped with Collaborate Pasadena, to shepherd the process, to bring together school board members and city council members, so that we do have the commitment on the part of the city, not only as far as some of the departments, but also psychologically, emotionally, that everyone in this community says that our first priority are our children. And that, as a result of that, we're going to shift priorities, we're going to shift resources, so that the city supports the school district.
Send it down to Chief.
Thank you. I will definitely be in attendance. Let me just state, I am endorsed by the United Teachers of Pasadena. I had some very great dialogue with them. I am concerned with our school district. I think part of the reason that we kind of take a special interest in the schools is because we haven't spent enough time celebrating and marketing the successes within PUSD. And there's a lot of great successes going on. We only tend to hear the negative. When I moved to Pasadena, I was told public school is not an option. That's appalling to me. And I think collectively, we need to work together and collaborate to make our schools the best they can be, because ultimately, those schools impact property values, crimes, and every other aspect of our life. And those kids deserve our absolute best.
All right, Ms. Boyden, we'll start with you on this one. How would you balance the needs of your district versus the needs of the whole city?
I think this is a, well, it's a really important question, but I think that one is almost a no-brainer to me. Balancing the needs of District One in comparison to the other districts is such that, you know, with District One, you have to really think about, you know, what's improving the equality of life of this population, and how will that impact actually translate to better opportunities for other districts as a whole? Since we're all connected and boundary lines are just that invisible, thinking about what's good in this district may not be good in another district, is a real unfortunate way of looking at how to approach problems. Thinking about how District One needs impact and enhances other goals and objectives from the city's perspective is one that we have to be mindful to speak up and say, and be cognizant that we're speaking this out loud.
District One is a fascinating place. How many of you actually live in District One? Raise your hand. So, you know the diversity that rests there. It is a microcosm of the city. I feel that if we're able to advocate for issues that benefit District One, they benefit the rest of the city. We have everywhere from extraordinary wealth down by the Rose Bowl, to extremely challenged working-class neighborhoods up above Washington School. The other part of balancing the needs is to be able to have a great relationship with city staff members, as well as other city council members. So, in order to, as you all know, in order to pass any sort of legislation in the city, you need five votes. I feel like I have the skills and abilities and the knowledge of not only the issues, but also the other people who are involved, to be able to craft ordinances, local laws, legislation, that would benefit everyone in the city and not just District One, and would be embraced by the other council members.
We are one city. Each unique district has its own set of needs, circumstances, demographic shifts, what have you. But the bottom line is, you cannot have a great city unless all districts are firing on all cylinders, okay? The seven districts and the mayor representing the entire city, that's the engine of Pasadena that drives this city forward. Everyone must be firing on all cylinders. District One needs special emphasis. As a representative for District One, I need to make sure that that cylinder is finely timed and tuned in concert with the rest of the city. But the key is to be up on all the issues citywide, as much as I had to do as Fire Chief. That person that's homeless on the curb, having a heart attack, receives the same level of service as the person in the high-rise office building having a heart attack. Same heart attack, same level of service. And that's how you build a great city. You address the needs specifically to your district, but you make sure that you're locked in step with the other districts of the city, and that those needs that cross over and cross boundaries are also being addressed. And that's done through collaboration. Thank you.
How I would balance the needs of Northwest? Well, I've lived in Northwest all my life, like I said before, for decades, it has looked exactly the same. Northwest has a lot of needs, and the scale is broken. So, I would like to say that I am going to be a big advocate for Northwest Pasadena in District One.
We'll let this, let you start with this one again. This is the fifth question of nine. Pasadena is a city that's rich in its architecture, arts, culture, and diversity of heritage. We see evidence of Black and white heritage and history throughout the city. We do not see the same for Latinos. To date, there are only two items that recognize the Latino community. What can you do, or what have you set in place, so that that is remedied?
What I would do is I would collaborate with all of our Latino organizations, and hear exactly what their needs are, so that we can remedy that.
Pass it left if you could.
I think the key is to continue to identify assets that are out there that will forward the Latina agenda. We need to make sure that we are supportive, or we have many nonprofits out there in this great city. And I think that people are beginning to pull in the same direction, and we need to make sure that needs are being addressed, so that there is parity and the playing field is level for all facets of Pasadena, for all race, creed, and color of Pasadenaans.
Let Mr. Berry go next.
Pasadena is fascinating because of the diversity here. When we go to neighborhood conversations, I always ask people what they like about the city, and over and over again, it's the diversity. So, diversity means cultural diversity, it means ethnic diversity, and what would be fabulous is to be able to highlight the talents and skills that are here. So, already, we have the Villa Park Community Center, which is an Aztec structure. We have Chihuahua Wita, and there's an excellent homenage to one of the families out there. And then, there's a Robledo statue, who was a boxer here. So, there is not an extensive amount of recognition for the Latino community. So, working with the Pasadena Latino Coalition, working with Latino Heritage, working with El Centro de la Acción Social, working with the Villa Park Community Center, and other agencies, the Mothers Club, that are currently in tune with the talents and abilities of Latinos in the community, I think we can find some more great ideas to create representation for the Latino community. So, I'd work with them.
Thank you. I think that this particular topic is one that really needs to be fostered in a way that is very collaborative, very innovative as well. So, what does representation look like? This is something that the community really should speak very loudly and clearly about, how do we want to see it? And how do we want to see it for our future generations moving forward? I've been very fortunate to work with many organizations in Northwest, and Latino-based organizations as well, and even been on the board of Latino Heritage Association for many years. And in a lot of that work, it was very clear that there was a need to collaborate more succinctly between cultures and cultural representation, to be sure that there was an alignment of making sure that while we are trying to become a unified community, that no one person, no one culture was being lost in the process. And that might look a very, a lot different for a lot of different groups. So, really making sure that those voices are at the table and being heard in succinct ways, that we can move forward and do some very positive things.
I will start here with you, Mr. Berry. Question number six, in addition to increased law enforcement at our city parks, what would you suggest to reduce the significant and troubling recent spike in violence at these important public recreation areas?
The first step in improving safety in public parks is to organize neighbors. In our society overall, there is a phenomenon where neighbors do not know one another, they don't talk to one another. One of the best ways to protect our parks is to engage neighbors in a way around a positive, a positive that is recapturing the park and making it safe for everyone. So, this has already happened in the city of Pasadena on several occasions, and it can be duplicated or replicated. So, Bungalow Heaven, years ago, experienced similar issues, and the neighbors came together. McDonald Park is a terrific park now. Washington Square has a group called Friends of Washington Park. They have been organized for many, many years. They need, I think, a little bit of support and rejuvenation, but park groups like this could be formed around La Pintarasca and Robinson Park. What also needs to happen is increased number of activities. When you use the parks, they are safer. So, the combination between neighborhood activism and use would make them safer.
Violence in the park is something that we have had to deal with as a community for quite some times. I do think that there are really great programs that are helping quell a lot of the issues that do arise in the park when there isn't, as Brian mentioned, usage in the park. Parks After Dark is a wonderful program, happens at La Pintarasca, happens at Villa Park, and happens at Jackie Robinson, for a lot of, and it happens in the summertime. So, really taking a look at how we replicate that kind of program, that kind of structure, on a more permanent, ongoing basis, so that our community has the better engagement with their parks. And to watch families come out for movie night to watch movies on the wall is really absolutely wonderful. And that should happen on a regular basis, not just in the summer during that time. So, we really have to start taking a look at our resources and how they're allocated to really make our point clear, that this is something we're investing in because we believe in it as a city.
Well, safety in the parks, I think that there's a lot of ways to make our parks safer. Number one, I believe it goes with, once again, Number one, I believe it goes with, once again, with giving opportunity to those youth in programs, increasing programs in the park. Now, it's great to have organizations that will adopt a park, it's fine and dandy, but if you have neighbors in your area that are working three or four jobs, they don't have the opportunity to go to those parks all the time. So actually just making a better quality of life in Northwest Pasadena, giving business incentives for those people to have quality jobs and also more programs for our parks in Northwest.
One of the things we need to do a better job of is making sure that we have assets available for parents to do a better job of parenting. A lot goes back to the household. When we get into the issue of our parks and the use of our parks, a key element is lighting. There's been recent improvements with lighting as an example at Brenner Park. And I think lighting is a great deterrent. I think on top of that, we need to make sure we enhance patrol and visibility of our police department within the parks. And I think we also need to make sure that we continue to fund appropriately intervention programs that will ultimately short-circuit some of the acts of violence and gang activity that is occurring. And most importantly, we need to take control of our own parks. Use them to the fullest extent possible and make sure that the parks are maintained in a clean and safe condition, so that they will attract families to use them. And I think some of the elements will turn and find other alternatives.
Okay, we'll let you start with this one again. At the 2014 State of the Latino Address, the Pasadena Latino Coalition presented startling statistics provided by the Pasadena Police Department on the issue of domestic violence. In 2014, the number of Latino Hispanic domestic violence victims totaled the number of victims of black, Asian, white, and unknown race or ethnicity combined. What do you propose to do to address the issue of domestic violence in our community?
The spike in domestic violence, particularly with our Latino population, I believe has a lot to do with the education effort of the police department to get the word out and make it more reportable. I think people begin to learn their rights and they begin to realize that it's okay to report this activity. A large part of that spike, it was happening all the time, I think, if you talk to our law enforcement executives, but now people are reporting it, which is a good thing because we can take innovative steps to deal with it. I think there needs to be greater emphasis placed within our communities to educate people on reporting such acts of violence because the minute you report it, the first occurrence, you nip it in the bud. If you let that spouse or significant other get away with it, it begins to perpetuate the problem. So I think the first step, logical step, is to make sure people continue to confront head-on and, time's up, sorry.
I think domestic violence is something that should not be tolerated whatsoever. I would like to say that I have a sister who is a victim of domestic violence. And a lot of the domestic violence that I've noticed in going to counseling with her has been due to the fact of, between black or brown, has been due to the fact of economics and husband may or may not have a job. So I do believe that if we gave opportunities once again and business incentives, that could probably deter some of that domestic violence. But domestic violence is something that should not be tolerated whatsoever.
So how do you address domestic violence issues? I think there are a lot of groups who do a really good job at trying to support those domestic violence programs that do exist in the city currently. Is it enough? Probably not. Do we need more resources associated to that? Yes, I do believe we do. In addition to making sure that there are enough resources, people actually have to be sure that there is a support system behind an individual who files a complaint, who speaks up and speaks out against this sort of activity that's occurring in the home or elsewhere, quite honestly. And in that effort, we have to be sure that we create those kinds of support mechanisms to allow individuals to find alternative situations for themselves so that they're not perpetuating this similar or same kind of violence generationally. So we do have to take a look at where are we spending our time and our resources and how best can we collaborate and get others to partner and collaborate together? There are plenty of groups that do this work in this community and I think we should be collaborating with them.
First of all, education. So education of what resources are available. There are several agencies that are working in this area right now. So Peace Over Violence is doing good work in this area and they also link to other groups like the Community Job Center and the Villa Park Community Center. The next one is access to services. So there's a model in Latin America called Health Promoters or Promotores de Salud, expanding the opportunity for those to happen either from the Pasadena Public Health Department or from some of the other nonprofits would be an excellent way of helping people to access the services they need. Responsivity, so the Pasadena Police Department and Peace Over Violence have been working for several years on a program to identify the victim, intervene, and provide the victim with resource, with psychiatric care in order for them to heal and grow and to separate them from the perpetrator. Next is parenting classes. The Parent Project and PACTO have done that. And the last one to deal with is chemical dependency, alcohol, and drugs because those are contributing factors to abuse.
Ms. Boyd, we're going to start with you on this one, and if you could pass the microphone left. Question number eight. Do you speak Spanish? If not, would you expect your field rep to be bilingual?
No, I don't currently speak Spanish. I actually speak French and read French, but the conjugation doesn't always work out well in translation. And yes, I do, and I would expect my field rep to speak Spanish. And if I could do, if I had the brothers of my way, they would be more trilingual than just bilingual.
Un poco, that's a little bit. Poquito, I guess un poco would be the more, is it, poquito? Everybody uses poquito now? Well, okay, well, sorry. Well, I could use, well, I speak it enough that everybody understands, everybody understands what I'm saying when I'm at the door. I could say that.
I do not speak Spanish, but I do have a fiduciary responsibility, much like I had as fire chief, to make sure the person who picks up the phone is fluent in Spanish and the person responding to handle your problems speaks fluently in Spanish. So the answer is yes. My field rep would have the ability to communicate in Spanish.
Mr. Berry?
Si hablo español, lo que pasa es que mi, what, hace diez años fui voluntario del Corpor de Paz. So yes, I speak Spanish and it would be absolutely necessary for me, for my field rep to be bilingual. I lived in Guatemala for three years, I lived in Spain for a year. I know what it's like to come from a disenfranchised cultural background where people are trying to improve the quality of their life through immigration. I know what families do that have to sacrifice and save thousands of dollars to try to send their families northward. I also know what it's like when people get here and the challenges that they face, both linguistically, culturally, and socially. So I would advocate heavily for as many opportunities for the Spanish-speaking community to have access to government, to elected officials, and to social services.
Okay, last question. We'll start with Mr. Hampton. If you could pass the microphone to your right. The question is, if elected, will you commit to serving the full term?
I will commit to serving the full term.
Absolutely.
Yes, of course. I look forward to it.
When I am elected, I will guarantee you, I will serve Lord willing the full term. I am committed to public service. I always have been committed to public service. It is what I do and I'm looking forward to giving this district my full-time attention as a retiree, with the exception of teaching part-time at PCC once a week. It will have my full-time attention, the constituents of this community.
Let's give each of you thirty seconds to give your final thoughts.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for being here, once again, for celebrating my birthday with me. I really appreciate that. Love to see all these faces. My birthday party's never been this big. So I would like to just say thank you, once again, for being here. And our community needs more, deserves more, and so I ask for your vote.
Thank you again for participating and staying for this segment of the forum. I'm very engaged around supporting the community to take a look at some of the policies that we currently do have on the books for the city and start really making them a bit more relevant to today's time and what we are going to need to be facing in the future. I'm a strong proponent for education, being an educator as well myself and an IT professional. So I really have a good sense around how to create programs and effective things moving forward.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I look forward to serving you as the council member for District One. I believe that it's important to foster relationships between neighbors. I believe that it's important to place students and children at the center of our public education. I believe that it's important to develop employment opportunities at a livable wage. I believe that it's important to ensure that City Hall is responsible and accountable. I believe that it's important to strengthen ties between the police and the community. I also believe it's important to protect our environment and use it, use our resources wisely.
Thank you all for being here. I am humbled. I ask for your prayer. Moreover, your vote. Together, we can move District One forward. I can promise you, I am committed to that. My family is committed to it. And there is so much work to do. If we're really going to have a great city, let's start in District One, let's put the emphasis there. Everyone get on board a train because it's ready to leave the station. All aboard.
These are your District One candidates. Thank you so much for being a part of this today.